They'd be supported by 15 pair pros, counselors, and social workers, and one BCBA, which is Board Certified Behavior Person to help with all those programs. So in addition to that, five contingency positions to address bubbles and, you know, those things that happened to us where we thought it was going to be enough to handle with two teachers or three, and we have to add an additional teacher. So we have five contingency positions. Three custodial positions will help us with the additional space of the urban improvement project, as well as Sharp Spur to cover that additional square footage. Then about $1 million in a whole series of miscellaneous items, middle college program, a little bit of money to cover increased costs there. Nursing services, primarily with Meredith, also with individual support of students. So it's over $100,000 in that category. Voluntary background checks are increasing, so the cost of those background checks and material supplies for that. A small amount of money to accommodate staff that have certain disabilities that were required by law to accommodate. Software and program increases throughout the system. Phone internet connections up about 50,000. Medical supplies, I think the primary thing here is the UPI pens. We were getting them for free, and now we need to build them into the budget. And then some other contractual service items. Some other items included under Section 3B, equity training. This would help support the efforts that you're going to hear about tonight at the business meeting, would be equity training, resources, supplies, materials, PD, those types of thing. Cybersecurity software, as the board's aware, last year we added a cyber security person. That individual's recommending a number of pieces of software. I think it's about $300,000. We're trying to make sure we protect their system, protect both their student and our and our employee's systems. And then a portion of the money that would help us with classroom projection replacement, as well as MacBook replacement. Compensation for employees, this budget reflects the need to address minimum wage. It's going to go up, you know, it's staggered in from now to 2024. We'll have to continue to reflect this in future budgets. A salary resource pool, including the related benefits to go with that, as well as healthcare costs increase, which right now in this budget, we're reflecting a 0% healthcare cost increase. We'll continue to take counsel from our consultant and see if there's a need to change that. But right now, we're reflecting a 0% increase for the board's side and for the employee's side for healthcare. We do have savings in the budget. You know, mentioned before, the relocation of the early childhood center at Funkstown. The only savings that we've identified specifically here is about $301,000 in the reduction of the need for a coordinator, two custodian positions, and a clerical position. We did not itemize a whole series of miscellaneous items. I did send you a note that reflected just some other items, but we did not itemize those savings, but there will be some other savings beyond that. And then we, as we did last year, we went through the budget line by line, made a number of very minor changes, a lot of trying to get the money in the right categories to reduce the need for some of our category changes with the budget adjustments in the future. And there's always a large chunk of money in turnover credit. This is more senior people leaving, hiring younger people. Don't ask me why, but the accountants tell me we had to show that as a turnover credit. So it's it's something that you realize throughout the year. We gain turnover credit throughout the year, and we need to gain it, or we actually become a balance, a budget that's out of balance. And with that, we'll open the floor back up to questions. No one stopped me along the way, but you certainly would have been welcome, but we'll add entertaining questions now.
Colleagues, questions?
I've got a question. I'll start with the savings from the Funkstown Elementary School. What is the cost that we're going to incur with moving those students out to Pangborn? Are we having to put portables out there? And what is the cost of that at this time? Do we have any idea?
So there's a number of moves that are going to occur with that. Our advanced learner program will go to Greenbrier Elementary. I don't think there'll be any substantial costs to moving the children there. Our three-year-old program and the, I always get the initials mixed up, but the transition program for our four-year-olds, we're going to move to ramps. Actually, several of the students that are in the, I think it only has like five students, several of the students that are in the program are Ruth Ann Monroe students already. So we don't see any additional costs there. There's space at ramps, a substantial amount of state rate of capacity left there at ramps. We will be moving three of the general ed pre-K programs to Pangborn. They will not be in portables, but we will establish three portables there at Pangborn. We're going to add one additional program at, pre-K program at Daub to give them two to support their, you know, their district for pre-Ks. We're going to add one portable there to Daub. The cost of a portable in the past has been about $100,000. We'd anticipate it being similar to that this year.
I just might add that there is an email that he sent to all of us outlining all these things, because I had asked the questions. So it just came through earlier today, sometime lunchtime, I guess, or something, whatever. I visited Funkstown. I just wanted to see what it was like out there. And Mr. Stark spent probably an hour and a half with me, and I appreciated that very much. Of course, he's retiring at the end of the month and so forth. I think he's looking forward to it. One of the concerns that I heard from some of the teachers out there was the fact that, let me, I'm not familiar with all these things. The transitional pre-K program, that's what they referred to as the therapeutic program, same thing, I guess, and so forth. Right now, they are, there aren't many students in it. There are five, six in it, something like that. And one of the things that they said they liked about it being there was the fact that right now, they can, this is my term, I don't know what the proper term is, they can mainstream a couple of these kids into regular pre-K classes for an hour or two as a day, as they see them making progress and so forth. And the concern was that would they be able to do that at the schools in which they were going to be, these kids would be sent? Because the teachers there know these children, whereas the new teachers, you know what I'm saying?
We've got to realize, everybody at Funkstown's only there for one year, and then they leave. So you only know it's a whole new group of students every single year at Funkstown. One of the upsides to actually moving it to a school, particularly if the students are in that district and/or move on to another program similar to that, they might be in a school that they'd be in for kindergarten or first grade or second grade. So the ability to transition the children in and out is something we do across the county. So in our summit programs for, particularly for, well, even for all levels, for elementary, middle, and high, the students who are in the summit program might be assigned to summit program, but the students, as much as possible, we try to push them out during the day if it's at all possible. We have some students who are in the summit program all day long. Some students are pushed out for a period or two. Some students are pushed out for the majority of the day. The four-year-old program is very similar to that. It would operate that way at Ruth Ann Monroe. There'd actually be eight or nine pre-K classrooms that the students could push out into. So it wouldn't be a risk of maybe one or two of the students ending up in, or two of the students ending up in the same classroom. So the students will be served the exact same way. And again, the students are only at Funkstown for one year. So the getting to know students, you know them for one year, and they're gone. One of the advantages of connecting the pre-Ks with the school, this is more the general pre-Ks rather than this, you know, one of the big things we're doing right now is we're having pre-K and kindergarten work together, work together on transition programs, work together on intervention programs, anticipating the needs of these children coming up. The children that are Pangborn students that are at Funkstown are not known to Pangborn staff at this point, including the principal doesn't know, doesn't know the teachers, doesn't know the students, because they're never associated with Pangborn. They come to school, they get off the bus, they get on another bus, they ride to Funkstown. The cost for that's about $8,000 a year. They ride back to Pangborn to get back on a bus. They're just not part of the Pangborn community, and they should be. And part of my effort with Pangborn was to provide, I think we will always be at least a five-round school at Pangborn. I'd love to be able to reduce the numbers there by 100 or so and get class sizes down even smaller, but I think we still would have five rounds of everything. So I want to make sure we be able to provide five pre-Ks there. Similar to that, Daub, you know, has one full program. Ms. Hoover's been here before, shared with the board. I think she's been in some of our videos before. I'd like to get two pre-Ks there to support their two-round school. Now, they eventually become a three-round school with the magnet program, but that doesn't start till second grade.
Those five students are in the transitional program at Funkstown. Will they be put into a elementary son program next year? What, do we know exactly?
Well, I never like to talk about five students, because we get down pretty small when we start talking about kids at that point to be identifiable. It would, it would be up to, if they have an IAP, it'd be up to the IAP whether they actually would continue in a K to three or K to two summit program, or whether they'd be mainstreamed or what, it would be individualized by each student.
I was amazed at some of the stories behind some of those children's backgrounds.
Again, we want to be cautious that we don't identify students.
One was very, very sad.
Most of them are.
Another point, just a thing, you might want to bring this out to my colleagues and the people listening out there. You state in your email that, you said, "I discovered during this exploration process that we are not allowed by federal law to provide Title I services to students who are not located at Pangborn Elementary." So those kids are at Funkstown, can't get Title I, is there entitled to it?
That's what I was told. I was told, I also shared, I was willing to go to jail for the kids at Funkstown if that was the case. It made no sense to me, but that, after some research, that's what I've been told. So we can't give them Title I services. It just seems like to me a long hallway down to Pangborn as far as federal funding goes, but if they're not housed in that building, they're not part of, part of that program at Pangborn.
Thank you for your details on your email. Appreciate it, those questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm going to ask it. I'm going to ask another question.
Sure.
The things that I've been hearing for four years is our class sizes, and as an average, I'm sure it looks good, but we do have some classes that are very large, and we know there's bubbles in different schools. Is there any way possible that we can look at that and see that we can get numbers down a little bit smaller? I know that we got some schools that, that are low in attendance, as in classroom attendance, 15, and it just seems to me like we got some teachers that are teaching 29 kids, and doesn't, the equity's not there for a teacher, and I'm, and maybe not for the student either. How do we get to that point where we can have, you know, students that are equal in classroom? Because I know that we've, we've all heard the students say, you know, "I get disrupted too because of this student who's disruptive," and the learning isn't as, as good for me as it is when you have a smaller classroom. How do we get to that point in a budget?
Well, I mean, you can see the challenge we have today. So I'm presenting a budget that's about $9.5 million over where we were last year. The money we have guaranteed in the bank right now is 1.6 plus the 2.5 and a little bit of other.
Four, four, give or take.
So I'm proposing a budget that's about twice as much, twice as much, as what we're guaranteed to get. The challenge is, you know, we can add additional elementary positions, because that's primarily the main concern, although we do have many classes over 30 at the middle school level right now, a number of classes over 30. I better not exaggerate that. If Rick was here, he'd probably tell me an exact number. Doesn't get easier at middle school. And when you get into equity, numbers don't always tell you equity. I can make everybody 20. I can guarantee you, it will not be equitable. It will be equal, but it will not be equitable. 20 students at one building are completely different than 20 students at some of our other buildings. So I think those are part of what we look at. Our one and two-round schools are absolutely, while they're wonderful in many ways, they are, efficiency-wise, they are very challenging to staff. You know, when you take something and it's one and you divide it by two. So if, if you're at a quote one-round school, the only true one-round school we have right now is Cascade, if we take, you know, we get to 30, we divide it in two, suddenly you have 15 and 15, while somebody else still has 26 and 27. That doesn't make it equitable. Two-round schools, you know, you've got 25 or 26, you start getting closer to 30, and then you split it three ways, and now everybody's got 18 or 19. Ideal, it just makes it challenging to do that. And if you have grade after grade after grade like that, it's challenging. You know, I've shared with you before, Hancock's 31, 32, 31, 32, 33, 31. All those classes are too big to have one consistently, so they're always going to be 15 and 16 for the foreseeable future. We should anticipate fantastic results from a school like that, if indeed, class size makes a difference. According to the research, it does not make a difference as far as academic achievement. Management of the class, easier for the teacher. I think all those things, common sense would tell you it's more, it's better for staffing. I don't know, Mr. Gessford, other than allocating more resources, you could set a hard number, get to 25, we divide it in half, 12 and 13, you know, if it's at a small school. If it's at a, you know, a two-round school, we get to 25 in a classroom, so we're at 50, we divide it three ways, it's, you know, 17, 17, and 16. But when you make those hard rules, it's costly to try to do that. So we just, we just try to manage it the best we can. I do count on the elementary executive director to kind of follow and watch class sizes, be aware of the needs of each school, be aware of how schools have used their resources over the years. Sometimes we've had schools trade in various resources, and, you know, that doesn't get remembered from one group or administration to the next administration. We've had to remind people of choices that they made. We had a Title I school up until January, had class sizes of 25 in kindergarten. I mean, that, that's a very high number for a Title I school. That's now been resolved internally by the school that these classes are now 20 on average. So I don't know, I know I didn't answer your question. It's more teachers is a simple answer, but it will not be equitable. We can make it equal in some. I don't even think I can make it equal.
So we know that the county is having some difficulties coming up with funds. They've had that issue for years and years.
I would probably not take exception with you, but I think we need to take exception to that, and I'm not arguing with the county, but I think it's something we need to realize. We know at the end of last year, magically, the county took in more than $6 million over the expenses that they identified in their budgeting process, which isn't unusual. You know, they, they project budgets, and sometimes I'm sure it's fall short, and sometimes it's over. But as far as I know, it was over about $6 million. In about two sentences, staff explained what happened to the $6 million. I did not see a vote by the county commissioners or how that money was used. I think most recently in the paper, we've seen a substantial amount of money be allocated, certainly to an organization or resources that we all want to support, our firefighters, but they seem to have come up with resources for that. I think what you're going to see, based on what I'm seeing about our foundation formula, if taxable income's up substantially, they will have not only more income from the income, if the income's up and their taxes were the same, they would have increased income, but they're going to have another windfall from the increase in income tax locally, because that changed to the maximum, as far as I know, this year. So they should have a substantial amount of money come from that. Also, the disparity grant has gone up, I think, from two, two and a half million to like seven and a half, eight million. So from what we can see from the state budget, they've increased over $5.5 million in disparity grant in one year. We have consistently, from the county, received less than the county increase in income wages. So I'm not arguing with what you were about to say, Mr. Gessford. I just, I just want to clarify for the record. It's a choice, and it's certainly up to the county commissioners to choose, but it's a choice of how they're using the resources they do have. And our real estates are all on the rise. They went through a period of time, as real estate went down, and each, you know, one third of the county gets assessed every year, is what I understand. We went through those three or four years where real estate was going down, they were probably collecting less real estate tax. But now we've probably gone through our second or third year. Mr. Reidner, you've admitted more about this than I would, but I think we're on the increase with real estate values. So I would think that their real estate income is going to increase over the next several years. So I think it's, there's some choices, and I think we waited in line. You know, when they had a 3% increase, what I think I remember is we got about a 1.25% increase. I don't recall what exactly it was last year. I'm sorry, you had a question in there somewhere?
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I was, I was going to ask here for the local funding estimate. You, you're estimating $7.8 million, and right now, we're at 2.5. Is that correct?
I'm estimating our requests, based on this budget, our request to the county commissioners would be that number. If the comp ed number, if there's money in the supplemental budget for that, that number could be reduced by as much as $900,000. But of that number, they're required right now is the 2.5 from the low effort escalator and whatever the value is of the 38 students. I don't know if we have a number.
If board members want to look on the, on the summary page, Section 1, Lines 1 and 2, so it's at the top of that document, right on the first page, the total value on Line 1, which is maintenance of effort and the required increase to our 38 students, is just a tick under 2.7 million, and the amount to balance the budget is a 5.1, almost 5, yeah, 5.12 million.
Beyond the required money.
Beyond the required money.
So where do we come up with that money, the difference, if they don't come up with a big portion of that?
It would have to come out of cuts to this budget.
It's a lot of cut.
It is a lot of cuts.
A lot.
I mean, the amount of money, if the county commissioners don't increase at this amount, you know, we don't receive the supplemental budget, would be, I mean, it's the entire compensation package. It could be even that much.
So we need to be prepared to, to find some money if they don't give it to us?
Based on what I can see happening, you know, we, we're relying heavily on the county commissioners this year. We've helped them in the past and made it through other budgets. We need to rely heavily on the county commissioners this year, short of something changing. A lot of people believe Kerwin's going to change something this year. I don't see that anywhere. Of course, that, I know here, it's going to be a 200 or 300-page bill that will drop here eventually. I don't know that it dropped today or not. But my understanding is there will not be additional Kerwin funding in this year's budget. That 57 million that was reallocated, where we picked up the concentration of poverty money, is the money that was anticipated to be the increase for FY '21. It starts July 1st of 2020. So I'm not aware of any Kerwin, additional Kerwin money coming from this year. So we're looking at the money that we're going to get, plus, I hope, $900,000.
And I think a lot of times, people have that question mark of what if they do get money, or if we don't get money? I don't think anyone has come out and just said, "You're not going to get anything in this year," and that's why everyone's a little leery on stepping forth and giving you numbers. I mean, I would be too, you know, with those kind of numbers, you don't know what's going to happen. It's just kind of one of those things where they could just push it through real quick, and what happens if you get it? And it could take two years before you get it. So I think that's a concern that I would even have, you know?
I think, unless that was last year, maybe team, you can help me out. I think any money the county commissioners give, I think it's this year above maintenance of effort, they can credit towards next year.
That's correct. That's what I understand out of the blueprint bill.
So if that, if that comes in the bill that gets dropped, the 200 or 300-page bill that gets dropped, they're at no risk to put out the money, and next year, their money could be zero, if they've already given up and beyond what the Kerwin Commission requires. So it is kind of a no-fault year, if anybody's worried about giving too much.
Right, right, okay.
And I think, Mr. Gessford, to your point, having watched a number of the commission meetings, I don't think there's any indication, watching the commission meetings, that there's new money in FY '21 based on, on what's going to happen with the funding formula. It's 22 and beyond.
Okay.
Anyone else? Are you holding back, Mr. Reidner?
No, 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 no. I'm reading his mind. I know what he's thinking.
Come on, we're rumbling, Mr. Reidner.
No rumbling, just grumbling.
Just grumbling.
I have a question. Mrs. Fisher. When are we going to start looking at what we can cut if we don't get the money from the commissioners?
I think we're always, I mean, we, we could start with everything that's additional in the budget, but I think most of those things are very much needed. We go down through the increases we had and various contracts we have, we will have to pay that amount, whether it comes out of increase funds, or whether it comes out of other types of cuts, we will have to pay those, those increases in cost. Meredith's cost has gone up because nursing cost has gone up. I think we, you can't pay the same amount for years and years in a row. It's going to go up. You know, we have the need with the behaviors of our elementary learners. You know, we probably would pare that down. Maybe we would have to eliminate that program. Like I say, our compensation package might have to change. I don't know. I think, Mrs. Fisher, I think we're constantly looking at ways we can balance and change what we're doing with the budget, but this would be a substantial cut if we don't receive additional support in some way.
From a timeline perspective, I think we have a joint meeting, or you have a joint meeting, with the commissioners coming up here, first week of February. I think staff's plan for you is to present this budget to them at that time and hopefully get some feedback. I think we'll start seeing county CIP budget, I think, rolls first. That might be yet the end of this month, first week of, or first week or two of February, but it'll probably be end of February, first week of March, before we start seeing their, their operating funds. So I think, you know, we may see some tea leaves, but may not see much until then.
Right, so you've already seen the newspaper. I think we received 6.8. I don't know why that number is sticking in my head, but it's more than the 4 million that they have in their long-range budget. We need more than the 4 million in order to accept the 6.8, and I think the 6.8 will actually go up. I think that's 75%.
That's a 75% recommendation. Based on what we're seeing from IAC staff, in terms of their recommendations to 100%, we've advised the county finance department that we'll need $7 million in local, just a tick over $7 million in local funds, to meet the state allocation, in part because the county, because of the way they staggered their payments for the Sharp Spur School, their allocation for Sharp Spur and FY '21 is greater than the state's. It's about 2.7 million off schedule, is what I'll call it. Not that they've not committed to it, it's just, it's in arrears, and so it's dipping into the FY '21 money, because it's off kilter with, with what the state's allocation is.
Jeff, when did you say that CIP information was coming out with the county? Did you say?
I think their CIP budget starts getting unveiled either end of this month or first of, first week or two of February. I'd have to look at the county's budget calendar, but their calendar lists out sort of some benchmark dates, and CIP is close.
I think they go through sections of it at a time. They don't go through the whole thing in one day.
Right.
But our, our staff has alerted them the need of what they would have to provide in order for us to accept the state money.
And that's those projects where we were anticipating building schools, the $500,000 that we're going to need to start the project.
That's the kind of money it is, but there's a limited amount of money in there right now for the start of schools. It's primarily for systemic projects and the completion of the UIP and the completion of Sharp Spur.
So you're saying there is a little bit of that money in there, or there's no money in there for that?
In the request we gave to the county and told them what we thought we would need, included the $500,000 to begin the design phase and the, and the planning reports for school one.
Okay.
I have a question. So looking at the counties that are eligible for the disparity grant, by far, Washington County had the biggest increase, $5.7 million, I think, just looking at this and your numbers. And is that tied to their, why did they get so much?
Disparity grant is tied to taking the personal income tax to the max. So the county, as you might recall, when the county passed their budget at the end of last year, last fiscal year, they made of last year, last fiscal year, they made the decision from splitting income tax and property tax increases to putting all their dollars and all their chips in under property tax or under income tax, knowing that they would be able to get a larger windfall of state money because of the disparity grant. I think, based on what I can recall of conversations at that time, I think this 5.7 is greater than what was even expected at that time.
Yeah, I mean, it's substantial. I mean, Baltimore City, about 2.5 million more, a lot of counties are pretty even and Washington County gets 5.7 million more than 2020 from the state.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
This, the slides show lists five additional counselors and social workers under the elementary behavior support program. How would those five be differentiated from the two that are listed on slide 10?
So the five would be dedicated to the five schools that may be receiving the program. So there'd be, and we'd probably look at the resources that are already available at the school. Most likely, most of them would be social workers, but I would leave that up to staff as they're trying to determine what the school already has as far as social workers and counselors. But those are dedicated to the behavior programs. The other two are just expansion of our normal, traditional counselor and social worker program across the county. Right now, I think we have, we've anticipated, we'd like to put one at Tech High. We have over 600 students at Tech High, you know, more than half of them are seniors. So you have all the senior college work, tech school work, employment, work, those types of things that go along with that. And then we have plans for another counselor position. But again, those might be things that, that don't make it pass the first round here. So I don't want to get hopes up in any direction with those things.
I have another question. Somewhere in the budget, I don't know where it is, but I think I read something that resource officers for FY '21 are gonna be roughly $950,000, maybe a little bit less. And we recouped $100,000 less than previous budget year because of turnover and so forth. We have the safety committee with, with the county. You know, it's always called me that there's approximately a million dollars, give or take, that they give us to pay for security, when we could use that for student needs. Is there any discussion at all about the county taking that over but still leaving that a million dollars in the budget?
We brought that to the attention of the county. The county really hasn't responded. We're hoping with the new grant that'll supply the next two resource officers, when that grant runs out, that I think would be the first opportunity, well, I mean, the opportunity exists right now for them to take that back over. I think, then we look at that, Jeff, one of like 20 counties pay it through their county funds, not through school funds. So the majority of the counties are paying it with county funds, not dedicated school dollars. But this new grant, these two resource officers, we get them in place after they've been trained. I'm hoping that when that grant runs out, that won't be shifted to us, that'll be accepted by the county as part of their budget. So that'd be a good place to start, but I'd like to see them start pulling that back. Again, you know, our maintenance of effort is going to pay for resource officers that in, I'll say 20, I don't want to say a wrong number, but it's the majority of counties that's paid directly by the county cost. It's not part of educational dollars. It's seen as the safety and security need of citizens.
In most other counties, you're saying?
In most other counties, that's correct.
Those officers, if there's a crisis that doesn't involve a school, they can be called into service to respond.
Absolutely.
So they are a member of that force, yeah.
And that, you know, this is a bit of a double edged sword, you know, and some of, some of the LEAs that have the resources paid for out of county funds, sometimes don't have a resource officer in the school every day because they get deployed, let's say, to patrol because of vacancies on patrol, because just like we have a teacher shortage, there's an officer shortage. So the bonus, if I can lay it out there in this way, the bonus to paying the bill is that officer is not as easily redeployed from a school to patrol because we're paying that officer's salary. So at that point, the sheriff's office or the, the city police department would have to pick up the salary for that period of time that that officer's redeployed. So, you know, we want the money, clearly, you know, we're not being funded in the way we feel we need to be funded for the program, but that is a bonus to the way our program is funded and not every jurisdiction has that ability.
And that would be because of the shortage of personnel, I would imagine.
Correct. But I, I think a tightly written memorandum of understanding or agreement related to the service despite the funding source could address that issue.
And I would think it would be to our advantage if the county were to pick up the cost of the SROs, that we have an MOU that would say those officers were dedicated to the school and the expectation is that they would be there unless there were to be some extraordinary circumstance that would mean that they would have to be pulled out. Anyone else?
I have some questions, looking at other needs. And it's a $675,000 where we have equity training, cybersecurity software. Could those be considered one-time purchases? Is equity training something that would be an ongoing thing and an online?
Well, the amount of money that, the amount of money placed there, so let's get everybody on the same page here, guys, if you'll help me. We are under section 3B, I think, it's on page two of four. So we have about $95,000 there. The majority of that's gonna be eaten up probably in workshop pay, a little bit in consultants and materials. We certainly could cut that number back, it likely would get cut back if we couldn't fund the budget. I don't think it's gonna be one-time costs. I think there'll be an ongoing need for equity training. I think that'll continue to evolve. Could it be less than $95,000 in the future? It could be, but I would think for the next several years, it's gonna have to be at least that much money. My original figure for that was about $300,000 in my working budget before I presented to the board and we reduced it to this amount to make the number more workable. The projectors and the MacBooks and those types of things were coming up. They won't be a one-time purchase, but it could be a one-time infusion of money, but then we're just pushing off, seven years later would have to all be replaced again and this isn't enough to replace them all. I've tried to build the technology department up to the point that it's self-sustaining, that they can continue on their own. But for instance, the cybersecurity money, I think the $300,000 there is an ongoing cost for cybersecurity software.
The technology equipment that was listed there also was part of, the technology department was trying to get on a five to seven year replacement cycle. So it would be recurring money just to keep the cycle going.
And that cycle was significantly greater before the budget was presented to you. So this, this number probably reflects more of a 10-year cycle.
Yeah, it's, it's about 50% of what was requested to get to a five to seven year replacement cycle.
And I think that's another point we need to make to the county commissioners. I mean, I, I don't know why, but we're seen as however the, however who describes our organization, but we're, we're a lean organization. We do not take frivolous things to the county commissioners. We do not make outrageous requests to the county commissioners. You know, I purposely make reasonable requests to the county commissioners. I think it's been the history of the board to make reasonable requests to the county commissioners, but somehow it always seems like it's described, not specifically by the county commissioners, as something unreasonable we're requesting. If you go down through the list, I don't think you're gonna see a lot of just frivolous things in here that, that I can't explain in great detail why they're needed and probably be harder for me to explain why is it two instead of 25.
Any more questions? To Mrs. Fisher's point, when do we start looking at what we cut? I would just like to voice my support for the elementary behavior support program. I think that's a $1.69 million that is a given for me. I just don't see how we cannot have those things in our budget.
That program speaks a little bit to what Mr. Gessford was getting at. You know, if you have a large class size and you have one student that's disrupting the other students, you know, how do we address that? How do we address teacher satisfaction? How do we address the teacher shortage? We need the resources like this to help support students that are in, in crisis and need additional support.
So if there are no further questions? No? Last call for questions? Anything further, Dr. Michael? Would you like us to know?
I don't think so. Our budget counter, we're, we're pretty much in line with our budget counter. We did try to get this presentation before you and get your thoughts on this, kind of in preparation for the county joint county commissioners meeting. It's purposefully early in the process this year, just to make sure our needs known before the resources are allocated.
So I have here in my notes that we have another work session scheduled for the 4th of February, if needed.
That's, I believe, the joint session with the commissioners.
That would be, I think there was a third one that would be if needed on my budget, but I, I'm not hearing the need for that right now.
Okay.
I think to Mrs. Fisher's question, there might be a work session way down the line if there was a need to cut from the board's budget, once the board adopts a budget. Okay. All right.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you very much.